Mr. Toku, we would like to see what you can do for us. And in Illinois, I'm more due international to America, USA chapter. See, I need to come back to the bar in your city, maybe. Come after you, I'm open for all noni along with Shida. I see and the cannon in our to do on a bad boy, a be less or not. I'm long so tall, long since Bob. So, Torino, I feel your own, yeah, Charlie. I feel about sorrow. They, if it's really they were in Luano. So, Lord, so Torino, as a national anthem, they could get pledged, could get jet and jet. With me, get get beat at the jail, go at the Molly, I do law. I'm a day, you know, great ambassador for the Eurobaries all over the globe. Let us see, Moki, pay a cabosy, anyway. Illinois, I'm more due international to American. I pop off a dupe long, Babawa, Babawa, Alexa, Jala. To one, I need a Charlie, that the power near Lijou. Lot it to show any, that is the power sorrow. I see encourage everyone, remember to buy the time question and answer. I want to be a little bit of money, I'd be on one, like it a bunny, and they can just so. Do you hear a what? To repeat, if I don't share a new urbanist, I why I'm not America. I want to do the referee referendum, I draw the diplomacy. For the, yeah, we are probably young, so quick, a jar, a jar, a nickel, a room. Our more we pay, he barely know referendum, no, I mean. About the better referendum, once in, there was sorrow. Actually, the diplomacy is, oh, so really, the noni, I, you. One, my father, so we run table, that is all on it. Glorious, we are, I forget, Kati, Kati, para, I do not. Project, we, at the ballet, no, Jay. So, no, we get, we are, I drew the way diplomacy. At the referendum, what I agree, and I want to guard the chair, every battery nine, I see, but Nina's. Come up with, yeah, we are authentic, OJ original referendum again. Moki, a carbony, I shall, like, Boboah. I do, well, I introduce, we, at the dark, I'm over, and it's about the dark. I want to, Illinois, I'm more due international to America. WWW dot Illinois hyphen USA dot com. To watch it, yeah, my posters, here, coming, I want screen time, oh, you. They, we are Larry, at the phone number, and whatever, I pay what? And my baby voice mail, still, there are so many phone calls all over the, all over the country, actually, all over the world. To, yeah, we are, the doubt, that I'm about in down, they're very on the voice mail, so, whatever, text message, see what? But you, Corey, I'm already text messaging, I'm already down, to repay, we cannot keep up. I do, if we, thirty, any, see, let you, but I do, when, from Beijing, did they? Ten, Jake, we were, move, wait, and that will, I'm open, in Illinois, I'm more due, I international to America, you, the website, you are. Move, best in down, on land, by, constantly. And to go back, I call you, constantly, I, when you are anonymous, who my funny, initiate. I can, initiate, I submit, initiate, about, we, maybe, I, Jack, when you are, I call you, number one, I need, for number one, see. And the KJ, initiate, about, about, what, to, by, Jack, we, oh, initiate, I mean, anonymous, eh, oh. Yeah, and then, yeah, Coco, anonymous, eh, oh, too, and so on and so forth. On a man, possibly, the kilo data, and she, but, you know, accountability, I've a transparency. Bobo, who, they, but, for what? He said, wow, oh, you're, Barney. Oh, well, I know, more, do I need, oh, what, I, but, officially, Bobo, I see. Ever, no, I pick, I, she, me, Bobo, I tell,巴拉,阿拉, new, look, I, I know, more, do I, I'm, you're, you're, but. I want, if I tell, I, she, me, you, go, she, probably, I, and that, you, I, she. Tabasi, really, Kenny, that, Bill, I, tell, later, but, no, I think, Coco. On my, costly, writing, get, get, by, she, man, so, on my, on my, costing, we, we. I make a request, you, Latin, or do, I, I know, more, do I. See, in, I, America, to repeat, yet, you know, when you're again, transparency, responsibility, accountability. I want to, yeah, yeah, for you, who, no, he has, he, machine, eh, or eh, or eh, website, you are. There, but, also, I, to, be, eh, but, I, so far, where you, what, what, I, what, I, awareness. I want to, while you're, for, 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 eh, one, if you are, to, we, on, eh, on, internet, in, eh, one, mon, on, eh. I want you, I, eh, okay, you, not, you, I, I'm, a lot, in, internet, what? Of, for, 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 on, you, to, go. Eh, Joe, Bobo, I, let, he, I, want, I, to, she, Lusha, I, want, I, to, Charlotte, I, want, I, to, Bellory. And my, so far, where you are. I'm, okay, into, I, been, eh, eh, me, only, back, go, let me, moment, we pay, all, long, no, baby, the, all, long, no, face, see, look, on, that, you are. To, eh, the, me, I, don't, I, eh, the, Daniel, eh, the, roommate, eh, the, family members, I, eh, who, who, I, who, let, she, can, he, college, she, she, very, to, terror, more.
Is it in agriculture, education, or roads construction with the syllable? Is it in the research stations? Or is it in the institutions for training and development for our use all over the place? Is it the young birds who are making Italian quality shoes in our way? Or the boys in Odobolu who are making metal chairs and tables? I mean, yeah, Google. Is it just in the, in the rubber conditions of, of, of beneath to something that are making forms and other? We had everything. We did not borrow a penny to do all this. And I believe if we have our country back, we are going to not borrow a penny for our development. Not from IMF. Not from, eh, eh. So we, we believe that we need to bring everybody together to front a call for a international press conference that we need to go back to our origin. After. But it Thomas, I will be okay share if I shall I want. I get commando, but we refuse because of our humanity, we wanted to make who are not us. Us.
But for what? Daddy, more for what? Eh, so we, I'm a way I will look away. It was only so we are going to come together. I don't require I want politician.
Oh.
So they wanted me, so so far one, oh, God one. They am I worry. Now, back to more a lot to the go twenty twenty three. That they will be, you know, so can they, can last first shit, I feel fair. They want what's your table?
Yeah, I want, I want, I want, I want.
So, car.
I'm my answer.
Yes, sir.
And that the main leader of the whole group is Professor Banga Kite. Of who I worked directly with.
Okay, sir. I have a.
And he knows that, that that is, there are certain group of persons. Say that all tons of politicians, we are going to sweep the grass under them by our campaign. I go, I go to basically campaign and that's an awareness campaign has to be most serious now to the grassroots, there are evidences of that. I personally have been calling home to find out the mission, eh, who can also be that across. The percentage is higher now than before. Said I'm on your way to one, maybe by turn on check. More originally, but for maybe twenty one. And no, she me. Well, let's say first, I could give you. Eh, Lisa. It's a little, it's a little, it's a good. No bag, but I'm ready to, I'm on. Red bank, got a shit. You gonna face us. We're sorry, but I'm pretty bad at it, but I can never. In my way, I see the whole lot of the core, the color, see, so, 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 so. Because of our own, see Obama. Because posting, but my dad, Ruma. That belief is very high. To read, eh, you auto contact any effect. Nishi. What is so funny? Eh, or a lot of my bar. But one day it's okay, it's a DM hour. Oh, oh, DM hour. But to my physicals. And that's what we are saying.
Actually, actually, sir, I pay like, like what between here and UK. You're famous, I caught you, sir, tell about the, 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 about sorrow. And my, but you still going on. Missy, I will, you are, we will not be restless. Eh, you are, I need for a ballet, eh. I want, I think, so quick, we'll see, continue United Nations, she. During, you know, I'll, 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 I'm a tutor. I want to take a temperature when you are. Because I will, I want so. Only, because, because United Nations, she. Hey, job, eh, bow, lastly, she to get, eh, for all of my, eh, United Nations, she to what?
United Nations, me, by that, you couldn't kill me. Because one thing, eh, eh, that we are European countries. In fact, Africa, I'll need. European countries, lower Africa. They tell you, I come back, they didn't know Africa to some form, eh. They need to. Because eventually, because there's, eh, there's a chatter which was, eh, established covering two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty four, international decade of people of African descent. They just say African nations. And in fact, there are no African nations. We have all along, all of us have been making the mistake of calling those countries African nations. They are not. And let me give you an example. To buy a pay. I will, you know, what's it that yet, I will, you put that, yeah, I said that, yeah, I'm back to know what's you look. Tell you, I, I, I would like to you, ah, can you da, ah, oh, oh, do you ensure that, ah, can you, I think, we don't look on. Come on, you buy, so, eh, they were saying, yeah, company, eh, oh, Jori. Look at my. Then, ah, I want, it can be, can it, eh, not change all the time, commander, but rather. So, the memo, to look married, not married, see that, tell me, I'm kind of cheating, eh.
I will watch the knee i i i Gogo. I will watch the knee and badu Yewa and all that. In journey reason, tough fishing. Come back to your focus mobile data. That homie said, eh, just say, yeah, yeah.
That is why I tell you should please. Copy the Yewa and she map. And I want you to start to trace when I'm talking about it. From from Badagui northwards goes in through Yewa, Okogun. And then via Kangi Dam, which has a bridge and to Sokoto. And then to Agungu Festival. Nineteen seventy six, some of you will remember. They did a Ricky, what I'll call, even though they called it a motor rally. It was a Ricky survey. You know those of you in the military, when you go about trying to find a route. They established that route. And that is why the dam in the Oyo was not allowed to function for its purpose. That it cost to share three thousand square mile of irrigation. There will be no space for them. Cannot equal it, a can a go down, don't you see another four thousand square mile of irrigation around that area. There will be no place for them. They deliberately stopped it. I understand it was this same variety after launching it. Did not allow the federal ministry of this thing that was in charge of a river basin authority to complete this tax there. And I most I've tried my best to talk to some of the governors. What is even fascinating, went to visit after because Oyo Dam has been flooding Lagos regularly, you know this. It's supposed to be used. It's supposed to at least provide a license or to that right here. That be then activities will happen, production in the interior. Why don't we love development? We close our eyes on this injustice that is done on us or because of a pit as of some contracts. And we we stay in Lagos and we stay in Lagos. Somebody calling me from 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 Lagos. Have been cancelled that.
Yeah, let me join us.
You see, that's what every time I'm on call with them. See, may the gracious Lord guide all of us together in this quest to giving an answer and a meaning to our own steps. We should give a minute to our own steps for for those who refuse and those who who admit. Those who refuse, although I push them along for that, he will do.
I still, I still.
So the the that route was surveyed and therefore, and even before then nineteen fifty one. I'm I'm by the way, was questioned of the colonial officers and did not that they should talk to their friends. But that's so that they guys on the other side of that boundary in Dahomi, which is now there. There's a river flowing straight down almost parallel to the to the to the boundary to Kotonu. And they wanted to start using that as their own export route, not coming through Lagos. You see in his book, they never wanted Nigeria in the first place. We gave them Nigeria on a platter of gold when we said we are going to wait for them. Eh, with our brother so that we can have independence together in nineteen sixty. And we will say we have gone.
We will get our, we will get our land back, sir. We will definitely get our land back.
That's why that route, and like I said, you should look at it. It's very, it's very important to them and they have lied that their their father had given it to them. Even during the slavery, they never got to the coast. King Gezo of Dahomi, what is get the slave they got, Eru, Tini, uh, Yekrada was got from Uchub. They did not take him to the coast. They sold him to Gezo who refused to allow them to, and they never got to it. And they even prayed to Tapatine to get guns for them to conquer the lands of the infirmary. And now did the uh, they are crying to the sea and hand over the land to eh, to the Queen of England. And that's a deep line.
I shake go sir, I shake go sir. I Jacky, I want your what in no, what's okay, your met that in no, what's okay. And to go on now, oh, no, ni, oh, Benny Johnson, Ojo, I your daily. Let you know, my wife Barista, can they do who? My two wife, uh, Morocco, our brother, our brother, Yemi, Jaqueline, Jabe, really, Jabe. That way, brother, Yemi, ni, I Jacky, you know, no, but what they question, you know, my be no. Ah, eh, Joe, uh, Mister, Mister Johnson, Ojo. Uh, can you bear it, it be a suggestion, I think, any fool, I like it, I come over, I come over, I like it, that he London, eh, she.
Yeah, I shake po po, uh, Moki Bogo Le, uh, I see Joko. Uh, in committee, no, for sorrow, Lelori. Uh, order be advised that be in Katali, Bejero. Uh, if Kenny is on, um. Uh. Nipah, you what it actually could ya. Uh, follow up to read. On the move, eh, but one year you. To run in Kocanti, Amanche, Nibi, eh. As a member of eh. Um, General Contractor of America. I'm a, I'm a collector, I'm a draft letter in, one send the C R one members. We, I send the C R one Senator Siwa, I see, I'm a House of Rep. Uh, Tabalo, Tab, as a follow up to. Eh, eh, you what it actually. Tell about Tom Bali, Bawa draft a letter. Can send this eh, members call con. Can member in Kowa send the letter in, see, let this eh, House of Rep where. I see Senator, oh, my dear, in control, my tea, you what do I eh? Nipah diplomacy, oh, my Tilly, Tabalé, she be, oh, my Moki Bobo, T, me bashi be. I'm from the state of Texas, tell me bashi be, tell me Tocla, oh, my name bashi be. Titi, uh, New York, and so on, Tom Bashi be, Tom Bashi be, send the C, uh, Senators who are at the House of Rep. Oh, my Moki, eh, eh, keep, I Bobon Katanche. How are, can you, can you, can you, where? So, both my dear, oh, do, I want presidency, eh. Um, you root a mince, money, email eh, rep, oh, do me, money, Danny. Actually, I want Senator State me, money, email him. So, oh, look, look, what I know, I leave find out to email eh, our House of Rep who want, I see. Um, I see Senator who want to go on letter in, project general letter to you, my wife drafted from. Um, from our head cutter. So, eh, I, I back in any eh. So, I back it, it move for me, oh, Nipah, the security. Eh, T, Lewa, um. All of Beni, um, what you back, go, who, eh, oh, eh, Wale, oh, sorrow, loss on. Ni, uh, Lurik, ni wa, um, and no, me, there's no scene, control so. And me, bad, dollar, back, eh, group, eh, 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 oh, more do I to one, me USA. Tabalé, my project, come. Come, project, eh, in Katar, Fesheni. So, keep Bobo, I can't, where especially to bad, they pay a fair amount, sophisticated weapon, like to be low. Can, Larry, Wa, come on, eh, in Katar, Fesheni. Had a breast, that was see towards it. So, Tabalé, me, eh, Danny, oh, my Mupi, eh, oh, come, wa, oh, shock, come, Nipah. Oh, the Mupi, come, ah, wa, we, you, Waluri, like, Mama, Dawa, continue, so, like, they may play in Katar, Fesheni. So, I want the UK, I want not to let move, another program, not, I want not to Feshi. So, Tom, but to the power, I want, she, eh, eh, I want, oh, rich, rich, eh, yeah. Eh, to wa, you but Tom, but to the, eh, eh, she, what you, Nipah, oh, Katanche, eh, I want, eh, yeah, toku. Eh, oh, my feet out, oh, my, oh, my joint, eh, lower, me. So, I, I, I made it, move for me, eh.
Eh, she, eh, eh, she go sir, I do play, oh, eh, I bar, I bar, oh, no. I bar to me. I take a come, why I do play, oh, he's a, eh, Katar, machine on the way. Latin, I'm a draft, I'm a letter, I think, you know, I think, Baobab, I want Congress, I think, Baobab, sorrow. What I play, Bobo, I want Senators, they're a killer, I am a law, so, don't, that's a good thing. Then, if I the project, no, I want to, I like, three, I wa, I'm. We continue, I know, to Ali, but so far, I'll share, what in compile, I want list our projects, traffic, show out, traffic, visit that. Today, we, I'm Ali, she, for you, so, no. Every new, or the platform, every new, eh, website were very shortly. But when on the, I'm for the purity, I will be as a Feshi. Eh, she goes, ah, those are very important things that you have raised for us, I've taken note of it. Uh, Barista, can they, you do please, uh, Barista, can they, you do. Uh, if you please unmute yourself and, um. Thank you. I think I was sorry.
Yes, sir. Uh, first and foremost, uh, Kongo, key, I'm Baba wa. Si, oh, I Lurila, that's the, and Julia, eh, she gone eh, she go, eh, come, eh, Amari, Ba, oh. Eh, she go, eh, cool, Muni Lo, oh. Eh, what do, eh, cool, Bobo, ba, eh, she go, eh, cool, eh, cool, do, Tom, Baba wa, versus, oh, Banda, Kotoye. All of my, I put a Google, oh.
I mean.
What the, K, I'm Baba, no. I'm, so, that, I want, oh, oh, do, do, that, she, I could so platform, eh. And when I spoke with him, I think it is during this week, to move, I want sorrow, we are more, oh, oh. Already, most of we, would I, oh, only, eh, meaning, no, we. Platform, call them, oh, learning to my hold, so that point, blow, making, wow, as part of the platform. So, look back, back, I can start to go into what I want to, um, I like, um, Charlie. Uh, be, Washington, eh. Your Bar Nation, oh, Kabugua, and I, oh, come, on, I like, I'm a color. That's why, that my very, I'm, you know, the mean, onset of. Platform by platform by platform. But Jerry, eh, you come on, that back on, you bad, no, all of conference, Conlory, or more, your Bar Nation, on, on, no, no, no. All of Gomez, go, you are, that by, eh, Jack, I will, Pashima. Uh, organizer, bodies altogether. So, everyone, okay, can we have what we can call. A kind of a, a body, that my, my harmonize, if you know that you are for your Bar Nation. If you are not on that platform, that harmonizes all groups. Then you are nowhere to be found. Because this, but any, any, at the end of the day, I'm a now, when you talk, you have a shame, so, like, oh, my, infiltrate. And they've kind, they can come with so many names, funny, fake names. Today, at the end of the day, people, they will sell, they will sell it to people and people fall for it. So, I would want to suggest, eh, job, I'm Baba, that,巴拉里do, eh, don't do alone. About, um, about, to discuss, eh,巴拉巴瓦, Professor Banda, Kintoye. Now, Mike, eh, book, I want sprint, I want, when you talk groups, I, I leave, blame, I want, in that group, eh, we don't care, or less, no, eh. We must encourage more and more, but more.
I'm on.
Sir.
Harmony.
Yes, for harmony, for harmony and also to sort out, to, I mean, to, to, to sort out the grain from the shafts. They get promise, eh, to know that, okay, these are the ones, eh, these are not the ones we need, and for a joint action purpose. We should try and do that, eh, then second, let me quickly move on to, um, a fast track process. I will call it the fast track process. Eh, your Bar Nation, what you, I can why, it's a person. I'm Baba, oh, 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 one day, I leave, blame, well, I'm she. Paco, Ma, I was, eh, from Western Region, I, eh, book, you, nineteen sixty two, about, I'm she. I leave, blame, oh, easy, like, the model, why? Cool, easy, one, eh, oh, do, eh, no, eh, yeah,巴拉巴马, Jesus, oh,巴拉巴马, if you do, do more. Cool, easy, yeah, oh, do, why, do you, Tom, I, when he, Pam, the John, causing. Oh, they change, we need the next forty eight hours. Based on things, so, we have to consistently, eh, eh, monitor things. Uh, modern, oh, eh, I'm Baba wa.
It was.
Okay.
That's because of for this thing. So the second point, you can um you start about four my job and the nineteen ninety nine constitution. Nineteen ninety nine constitution is just uh I didn't see any reason why it became to say but I said that wanted to use at a legal platform to just about the the real things that happened. If we as Yoruba were sensible enough, after two years of independence, one of the major players of negotiation, which I always say negotiation, who talked about independence was already in prison. That means with the Yoruba has already returned to his claim uh country within Nigeria. With and as a result, we couldn't talk right from nineteen to now, which I'm very privy to know because of my studies. Lagos has started to start uh to have a electricity shedding. The general power station was closed, all because of nine hundred sixty megawatts transmitted from Nigeria. And our people kept quiet. And they were sensitive, they were too low well only like that. Is that how to build a nation?
Hmm.
And some I was reading something, of course, I've known that fact. It is in Nigeria that you have the largest number of people in the world that has no access to electricity. And they listen about the you were told she told me uh Kenny uh what what I would call and an assembly where you have to roll out equipment, you know, I love the the whole of your batch will be wasted. And that's had been happening to people in the south. And that's why a lot of factors have run away from the Tega and from the Bano. The Bano was supposed to have several my giant uh this thing transformers in nineteen seventy seventy six. I don't prove it to him. It's a foreign language. And we kept quiet.
Hmm.
All because of political accommodation. And that's why I'm saying. I might be a way to go down on one politics system. We are going to cut them from the bottom. Because we have to get into the minds of the young ones to tell them the truth. And that by the time we are finishing, we do no longer want to see within the next small of high uh existing. No child had died because there's no hospital treatment. And no child should not have any education. We have to establish, that's why I'm saying that we are developing a course, a curriculum. And a curriculum that will be geared towards our development, a special kind of curriculum that is a pioneering curriculum that every child would science and technology and recording of history will be paramount in our society. So that I like be either you back for that simple to a one. We did that up to nineteen fifty uh sixty one and we lost it because we decided to join Nigeria.
I shall.
Please, and it's for me, the future is roasting for your berries.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Paris, I can't hear you, sir. Uh one more question, sir. I've only one minute, Ben. It's three hours, you know, ago, sir.
Ah, I would do, I might be no sir. I would, I don't know where you're entering, I might be more because I ran off quickly. Uh so um I want Baba one, what you done really, I'm not a woman, why? Another um I'm good, I know room, because I'm one of the convenants. If I am the conveyor, I will say, because uh I mean, I'm more, we are more, I'm a, I'm the conveyor of the Yoruba Sovereign Advocacy Alliance Network. And it's a sovereign, Yoruba Sovereign Advocacy Alliance Network. It basically, the United States Senate Committee on Foreign Affairs, we wrote to the chairman, the subcommittee chairman on Africa and global health. The man is um US, is a US senator, his name is Chris Van Pollen. And we called, we discussed with him and they said, right. The secretary said, right, this is what he said, you write. And what we did was, we put pen to paper professionally. We stated that nineteen ninety nine constitution has failed. And it's a fraud and does no longer exist. And those does no longer apply to Yoruba people. We also stated the twenty fourteen conference, national conference, which was held, we attach that to it. We attach nineteen ninety nine constitution, we attach the universal declaration of human rights. And also the United Nations Charter on the Rights of Indigenous People to Self-Determination and also the African Charter as well. And what we also did, we attached the latest evidence of the killings in the Gogo community, which we stated can be a prelude or maybe a prelude to genocide of the Yoruba people.
So it's happening.
But it's already happening. So so we 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 did that already. And we said, if the whole world stand apart and they don't do, they do not do anything. And the most, the largest homogeneous set of people in Africa, over forty million. In fact, I want Baba or other, I want sixty million, which, but based on what we see on Wikipedia, actually, with Baba, so I mean for you, MPO.
This figures are not right anyway, as a demographic.
I will, Baba wrote forty, Baba wrote forty four.
On that country, yes, it's another country.
But we we assume the only four million is to bene, called the war, at the togo, forty, yeah, I assume. So if the whole world sits uh side and they watch, they sit down, what forty million people being killed? It is Rwanda, the uh 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 the genocide in Rwanda would be a child's play. So we said it's going to be a scar on the conscience of human race. And also, uh we are looking at judicial angle. Judicial angle is not something I want to discuss any further. We want to discuss with our fathers in private. Um thank you so much.
I would like to, I would like to talk to you about that.
Okay, sir.
If you get my number.
Okay, I'll get your number from uh, okay, okay, sir.
Thank you. You, you, if I may, want to please, I'm not, I'm not making it personal.
Thank you. We will continue, you you will continue with that with Baba. Like I said, there's so many people have raised their hands. I see a lot of people putting their hands down already. You will continue with that. I can get in started. Be actually, I've been on me. Uh, I think, I want, want to share a lot of concern, I should, they know, they should, I don't know, she, Mr. Talk, we go with you. Enjoy, I'm mute, give us a brief, we totally pay, I want to cool, I show.
Um, I show, I crawl, uh you know, me do lots of today, came back by day, you know, more to multi sorry join. Can they bar process, I mean, they is proceeding. Um, sorry, or what team will be on the road, lay, move it down, sing comedy, response, see me. Um daddy, one, Mr. Johnson Ojo. Um, at this point, any to baru pay Yoruba nation, oh, see, enough. I'm talking about based on a premise, we, oh, yeah, cabres, you need coletta, come a call, then also cooperating with what the barrister just said. Eh, who, Emma, just norawa. There's too much letters with with the government of the United States. My very mommy, when I say too much, I mean too much letters. Everybody's writing letters. Egbe in coletta, egbe being coletta, egbes, everybody's writing letters. To the extent, to the way, one of their senior officers, the foreign department, spoke with Professor Ban Jackito and said, what are you people doing? What is the meaning of all this? Share okay, share to him, you call like bedanini, so you can let him, you call him a maga. Or what I have a soleni, or not laid, I pray this or kuso new. Shetiri, so bad, then party letter in, they party documents, I will go on the more information, do I love? You'll be surprised to hear that. The United States government has even more information than every one of us. I want commit, so to what, so surely, that will more, I bet, so surely, they have this, these are secret documents, oh, to me, oh, the project. They know what's going on.
Hmm.
So, I say, I know, coletta and back, back to and back with you. Look, there is a process. If we don't follow this process, I hope all these letter writings and, you know, banging and talking and, you know, street rallies will not be a part of fertility. Oh, Tora, oh, my daddy, so kuso. Nigati, I share only last year. I bring you, I share, I share, who, let us only over a gato in there. Money only that he might pay, the corner, I seen officers, money, foreign department. Okay, Baba, Kito, you need, can you two more, go, go, let, she, 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 you know, call her, I'm a, I'm a bad, I'm in, go back, buy it, instead, coletta, lots of coletta, lots of. Why not go through one body, one particular umbrella body to oversee all these decisions you're talking about? But because our people think everyone is extremely intelligent, everyone is very brilliant, oh, I'm a doctor, I'm this, I'm that. Everybody's writing this and it's compounding a whole lot of stuff.
Yeah.
So it didn't yet, so she, Jaukpe, we have an umbrella body. Whether you are in Australia, you are in Chicago, you are in Nigeria, you are in China, you are in Malaysia, wherever. Umbrella body, as we speak today, is the Lano Moudua. Ilano Moudua has, you know, membership from one hundred and sixty seven countries. But we are not like coletta. To go, it best at the effect, be, that they been saying. Now, we pay affect back, but we live what just see the call. Cowaboo, it's nearly, cowaboo, it's nearly, can we, what United States government, he is joba, so I'm besting. Come, I bet, it's never was so, Yoruba nation. I lost Europe, I lost African Union. And what what we're talking about, we're not talking about, oh, I know my senator. Or I know my House of Rep. They cannot do anything. Even I want more work on, to what need joba, to shisha, near, be job America presently. I'm talking about congressmen and people in council. But, but if I'm around, I'll be one, eh, ah, kill, let it say, that's perfect, it's all you now. Kill, let it say, do I, you, you, Barne, so, Nigeria, only know, Baba. Nor what he must, I continue two weeks, so, no, Baba, it doesn't happen that way, you can't walk that way. We are, uh, I'm a Nigerian descent, I the one, it job America could make, probably law, so, yeah, I just, eh, diplomatically, can you Nigeria, cool, ni, can you, Yoruba nation, cool, Nigeria. The process of getting a nation is not a joke. It is a whole lot of dynamics, so that, Jaukpe, you need world powers, you need. Moon bottom, when you're concerned, I will need more, Jilerio, on the act, I need, I need the West. I need anybody's slavery. And I laughed. It's so funny because you are saying it is slavery, but you are sitting in that country and enjoying all the beautiful facility and enjoying all the goodness in that country, getting good education, and you say slavery. Why not go back to Nigeria and agitate from there? Answer, I want to like, but I only say, okay, joba Nigeria, ah, Nick, who, he, money, go, go, I, that is power. And on not only fear in here, tell if you're in, and it is that diplomatic process, own the new, why Lano, USA, that the move, that the Papa, back to you, so, and that is what Professor Kito is coming to America for. Diplomatic moves, we're not joking. Cause he are rock, eh, I, I, eh, eh, at the Lulu, at the Joe, at the party, at the coletta, at the she, what next?
So I, if I be asked to what you are saying, you, you, you said a lot, and I know where this thing is. Because I have been uh through the American government test, what they believe is that Nigeria has a strategic importance to play. We have to prove that it doesn't. And that they want it, at least one way or the other, to survive. If you notice, uh, the, the ambassador to Nigeria came to Lagos and this day, the city key, Lani. That was an aberration. You see, it's like a deliberate act to spite us. Well, I'm not annoyed, it's for us to see that we have to prove to them that for Africa to develop more rapidly, there's no way we can continue to keep the local countries keeping in Africa. Look at the way we have to, they table it, and that's what I discussed with the the prof. We are having a document that we are bringing, and we should cover every aspect. And also to prove to the internet community that we don't have any strategic importance to play in Africa. The moment we go, Africa will now settle down. If we are, so I've been running, we'll go back to the Asaiel best. Because they can, the cattle they have will multiply it by eighteen times, occupy the silencer best. And there's still enough room for agriculture for them. They don't need a forest. All they are playing at is their so-called motherfucker vision, that they want to take over the land of the feathers. Regardless of whether we have Muslims in the south, this don't regard the Muslim in the south as people. So we have to make that. I'm happy that Toppe has talked, and he said exactly what I've already in my mind about the American government's position. We have, I've never written any letter to them. But what eh, the other time, somebody said, I was talking about, I said, I'm in London, I was talking about a press conference, a world press conference detailing out a rise and decline for the restructuring of the African continent. The restructuring, I mean, that deserving the countries that have got, you, you, some of you will know Professor Ali Mazri. He proposed that the African continent needs to put geopolitical reconstruction based on historic, this thing, boundaries. And that's the same thing we are doing now. We need to reconstruct Africa. We need to start from Nigeria. Eh, your person go, I said it in nineteen eighty eight, that for Africa to develop, Nigeria must dissolve. Your poster, go, of Senegal. And maybe some of you might eh call this man a madman, I mean, the late eh president of Libya. He also eh eh proposed that, that eh we should go back into eh the two, two-country eh formula of nineteen fourteen. And from that level, we could now eh distribute ourselves into whatever countries we want to be. And that's why we are calling for the dissolution of the Abaga. It has to be a clear statement, we need to dissolve this from, it's not just the nineteen ninety nine and uh this thing, constitution. It's the source, and that source had been, if you permit, I cannot eh eh discuss the full details of that source for you now. Because we've spent enough time, because I want people to understand it from the source, how it was not, the professor, I had to exchange the information with him, even books. So that we both agree on the same point. And that's why you finally saying dissolution of the Abaga from source.
Baba, I do pay, I do pay, shame goes, I, I will, you'll be made, eh, not in, no, it's okay. Uh, Mr. Barrister, can you get me, Mr. Talk, eh, who, me, you, she saw. La normal doa, I'm a, but only doa, uh, professor, new one, professor of history and all that. I that is, you know, go, I'm a, to one, you, MPO, Bobo, uh, United Nations, uh, what in deal, well, I want congressman, come, but she, so, all I want, see, I'm in the lobby. Uh, oh, no, London, I drew, Cherry, I'm lobby, I thought about, what the relation see, Bobo, he joba, buy it, no, near, says. Uh, they are back on coletta, last one, let, I come, I get, I sort of, so, kitchen, am I, I, we know how this thing works. Am I can call for you, sir? They back, coletta, so, the senator, I see, secretary, come, I, you see, be, Connie. Only and it only assess, that's the collect, push, hello, the secretary, pull up, send it off. So I want to, I'm bad, yes, sir. Uh, uh, near, I want technocrats, don't she, she, lower. I defect, he, you know, they vani expertise, get join, wa, they join, Ilano, Cali, Josh, eh. Get motion, so, like, I want to, I want, then, you can come, oh, mobile, oh, 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 what, like, ah. Well, we are to learn, Christianity, me Muslim, Nimi, Allah,巴拉, enemy, they are bully, doesn't discriminate. I draw, I don't, we call on, we get, we, oh, be, Baba, she, so, this, Baba, I, I like, come, 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 where, I come, I look. Cherry, I got this, so, uh, a barrister candy, not only, uh, you know, scar on the, on the global conscience. That's even, they don't care about conscience, am I can call for you? They've seen, they've watched many people die and all that. I saw what they did in Rwanda. They just went and cried while they are boozing scores and that was up. Cherry, he got our pushes, again, Baba, she, so, whoa. Only play Nigeria's collapse of two hundred and twenty million people who lead to global national security risk. See, in the way, but that, we are related Nigeria, oh, my, of course, so, people, Africa, slow. So we're still okay, we have been talking you, but I think about all of them, I love five, both of them, I go gold, yeah, did that more talk. By the time about ballet, what then everything our another. So we give you about what she saw. I'm a funny number, Kelly, bow sorrow, I change number. And bow sorrow, so wait about your technocrats, and you only more jelly. He got our one before me, all of it exactly. I try open or not, or not when it's our meeting. Everybody call what you want, but it's a machine, it's back, it is what you, what you tell about. You want to tabalay. Oh, no, like when it's our home, it's like boom, boom, you know, I'm not like, okay, they kill away, I do, we'll see what you talk about, you're only. Only can come my idea, why only can come more, more, this is what we are doing here. Get to base so far with your work, so I think, but zoomed down nearly whole five hundred people. Ah, thirteen, the one percent of it now. So I beg you. Uh, and the most likely, see, uh, Mr. Yemi, uh, will get through more question in order. What I pray, Mr. Yemi, me, oh, really, I'm a must, I'm a boy, yeah, it is step out, I be my father, Mr. Yemi. Yeah, me, conmo, era, Mr. Miss Yemi. See, one bass in bed, eh, Joe, uh, gentleman, Corey Day, are you any please? More pain on the wall, Bawa Lati, Australia. Uh, Baba, I'm see, oh, I'm being from far away and then Mr. Corey Day, are you any, if you can, please unmute yourself. And speak to us for about two, three minutes. Thank you. Corey Day, are you any please?
Hold on. I, 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 okay. He, he, so.
Oh, okay. And the problem for the connection is, I need, boy, I can edit, actually, my disabled video, you said, only from bad with even more strength. Early disabled videos, sir, project, we are doing in a column, but. You can disable the video because you're breaking up, sir, so that we can only hear your voice. We've seen your face. Emma, sorry, loser, Mr. Iron.
Actually.
Very, very good, very good, very good.
Uh, Moje, I should what you. I want, I popo, I'm more you, Ruba, to one, he. Uh, he, Australia. He did a movie, Penny, he, Australia, and he breaking, she really, they come. So you had to see, be, you really, the Yubba, really, the Scotland. Uh, I'm but he, Monia, funny, like the bike, I know, I'm more, yeah, me, so. Ne, yeah, no.
writing themselves, most often, eh, and T momo la now, when you, when you get back to yourself, make sure you do regional rule, not just centralize everything, or else you start fighting. This month before they started fighting, I called him, that look, there is danger ahead, please do what I advise you. That if I think I bear a move with you, Bruen, like you. Because they didn't listen, because the words of wisdom come from different people. People should listen to others, because I saw it clearly. Such as Sudanese, most of you, not the whole of Sudan, they are the same type of people and others. And I said that, and the only hat which is this much of time, dude.
Hey, go on, Baba Wa, eh, Jacky, eh, uh, Mr. Wu, you have a addition to what Baba has said? No, sir, uh, Moko Feg, briefly summarize, so, me like, on the key, Baba to sorrow. Uh, so, Lord, Baba got to sorrow, yeah, pay, um, you know, the experiment of southern Sudan, America got off. Based on our, you know, conversation with them, that Obu Walawa, so, but that is not going to be the case in your urban land, because I theory. I theory we pay in your urban land, we are not going to do anything central. Each of the places, each of the states, and my man made the results in, to the extent that, you know, to the benefit of the people there. And, um, like by all long, the pressure we're putting on, um, I mean, all the efforts we're trying to get through. As regards diaspora votes, call on Fuashi, uh, definitely, everybody in the diaspora will be able to vote in this referendum. The three major, the three major steps, the awareness, uh, the diplomacy, and the referendum. And I think we are on that particular stage right now. Eh, in cutting in us, no, she need to talk, uh, they are, they are also working for, you know, the emancipation of. The ethnic nationalities, but only, um, Eleluma, Beni Vito, who. Ali, 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 Drodini Nasu, eh, Torita, Wala, Midu Belt, Banana, Won, Elo, Obama, Law. Our fellow, ah, Nidrode, Wala, Midu Belt, Nitorio, Batet, She, Okolokpo, Fuwa. To get power, I found one, Ted, and Lori, or Rock, May, affect banation. Oh, Binyo Ju, Bashik Binyo, too, eh, will be on, why, Bo, I want, I pop, but she bears, she, it, Binyo Ju, one. Only, eh, Moboshin, Dawa, Moboshin, No, Lori, pay, can only, Neil, one, that, that, what the money, Nitorri, pay. Ning, Kota, Tieti, Kota, Tiri, Attiri, Pay, Joba, Nigeria, Gotisaka, We, Eko, Ala, Yemalo, Jerry, So, Badja, Yen, Shubon, Okonifion, Le, Lo, Where, Oh. Ah, on, oh, my, Fed, Dawa, Ala, Le, Unbubu, It's, A, Rito, Shell, And, Ben, Say, Shubon, Pay, One, Nilo, Yen, Eh, Tuda, And, We, Ronnie. Then, Lori, Or, T, Ilu, Ano, Nile, Yoba, Amalo. Otoni, P, American, So, Pa, Be, Nigeria, Shito, Afajaki, Wa, La, Belle, Nitorri, Got, Fall Out, Eh. Tori, eh, problem, Ta, O, Got, To, Nini, South Sudan, but, Ni, Gogo, Be, Or, Russian, Too, Same. Amani, Autonomy, Well, Adema, Law, Eh, She, Got, A, Mini, Latin, For Me. Eh, eh, she go, Mr. Topper, Key Topper, Mr. Jimmy, uh, Muma, P, Atina, War, So, Ke, Tippe, Ati, Mr. De, Wale, Hola. I won't met, Ati, More, All, Okay, Ni, Eh, Other, When, It, Got, To, Now, Was, Is, Is, But, Not, On, My, Day, So, Mr. Jimmy, Come, Am, Rush, Cherry. I want us, Okay, America, One, Is, A, Pop, Eh, Not, A, Quick, But, He, Uh, One, Look, Pa, Oh, My, One, In, Lucky, To, Get. I want, Joba, Really, The Nigeria, At, Oh, Million, Three, One, You Know, Cause, In, Got, To, Shell, And, Run, On, Pa. Tony, Yeah, Oh, My, Sue, CNN, Go On, Paro, I work on our release global satellite, Tofi, BT, Laura, Fire, The, Cool. Last, The, The, Dan, Barracks, Tofi, David, That, The, Power, My, Eh, Bullet, By Bullet. So, Ni, But, Our, Humble, That, Okay, Now, Some, I, I, System, Of, What, He, Ball, Although, Wow. So, K, Mo, We, Pay, Get, Much, Is, So, Like, On, Global National Security Risk. Ole, De, Ka, Back, Wa, Kujeki, One, Brace, It, Paw, An, It, Paw, Kupata, Be, Kill, Le, Wa, Kupar. You, But, What, He, Mister, Wu, Me, Just, Baba, So, See, The, Pay, Uh, Kota, One, Eh, Young, Eh, Boom, On, Fake, Boy, Violence. They, Ba, So, Pay, Ah, And, Abu, Bura, Wani, We Are, Defending, Ourself, Hotel, Alon, You, We, Can, Yeah, Attack. So, Torino, Depose, See, Ni, Eh, Jacky, Cause, We, P, Am, Am, Mula, Kukudo, Moti, Sorry, Fuwa. They, Bye, They, Bye, Dad, Dad, Group, Baba, So, Between, My, Baba, In, So, No, Ni, Ba, O, Go, O, Go, Ah, O, Go, Ah, Bell, It's, Nigeria, O, Go, Be, Africa. Don't change your currency, Baba, She, Soft Me, I'll Be, Africa, Two, One, Okay, I'll, Recognize, We Are, Two, Or, Three Countries.
Like that, anybody can come and say, ah, bye, ni, ashifashi, bye, lashifashi. No, we will not do it that way because people are saying so. We will do it the right way so that we can get positive results. So, um, you know me doing, thank you very much. And Teba biri, that are daily to the Lano organization. Every week, they have these things in place. Tomba need income, it will be our own duty to soke. Um, kaba lo biri, edjo, affair approve a phone. But we like that, that's fine. Because you pay, you go, you go, you go, we are not going to do it. We will not give anybody money without it coming from the center. So, Ashen, thank you very much.
Ashego, um, Mister Ayeni Omoiya. I saw your hands up. Uh, have you spoken or you're still with us?
Mushu wambio omo yami.
Okay. Ashen. They like, they like, if I, if Johnson, you draw your daily. Ashes are, oh yeah, about what sort of the first, so.
You made the order. Edjo, eh, more confero one, we. Uh, be on it, Baba, she be, 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 lashibanki, be, be, lashimambaki. Um, I'm an super relay the Nigeria, really Nigeria. A media way, uh, as he saw only to the Nigeria, which you relay the car. I'd be being Nigerian. Teba los C U K, the British, Bobo, I'm already to Walati, I'm not been here. Was so familiar, I'm Walati Scotland, I'm Walati Highland, I'm Walati England. England, it too many, you relate the Uyibo. Scotland, who relayed the Scots, uh, originally, I was Scott. Who relayed the Irish. Baban sorrow, Yoruba, you relay the Yoruba. I'd be being in Nigeria to relay the one there for. Near Australia, oh, oh, he leni, he is Australian, he should relay the. Edja kama aluoro, tiofima, edeki, ali, wa, more affirmative, ne ba, any tea and she. Back on now, Lati, toba, I'm already wa, edjamas of whom I'll be, I can share Nigerian. Yoruba Nigerian, you wa. Adjective, yeah, obulo clear, to read them, I'm about already, I'm sorrow. The master of Yoruba Nigerian, when you were looking at, hello, when you're the Google.
I do that a lot.
To know more and more about who I am and where I come from. Yoruba Nigerian, you come at where I wa. To read Nigeria, I would see Lola, to go Yoruba, what did you like?
Ashen. Asha, 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 Omoiya. Um, Terry, there, you paro, I want, I want to power, I want to your, eh, the Yoruba go. Pro, you know, one kind of global diarrhea, Ali. Who said the Yoruba, Mombé, one can support English, at the house, at the whatever, the other morning. Geshi, one, one to your crew, then, uh, history, Papa, what you, Paul, crew. Once, more, we, yes, or you, where, I want, I'm already three. To that way, or old man, that photo, which they found on in Nigeria, not possible. They think, they are, they saw that they can't, I'm Baba, and it be. He load it, I, I want to, you, but to read politics, to read, Jack, who, Jack. What the water, who is, who, what, I, I said, who. Somebody, what I said, who, the boy, I'm a dominator, by, I want, I said, we got. Come, you're calling, pass, so, I'm, 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 so, no, no, it's, so, Ashego. Uh, Johnson, you draw your daily, please, Abi Baba, any.
I don't play, Johnson.
Yes, sir.
I'm wearing, I'm wearing, I'm.
We're, we're looking at it, sir.
Really, really, Eli. I want, I'm sorry, I want to, to, like, you, like, you, like, it. Would they, I'm, I'm, Baba, I'm, 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 I'm. I want, Boba, by, through the, I could, I could. Eh, in your mini Australia, two, two, Sarah, you related. Would you play a lot, what, totally, a member, I'm, 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 London, I'm, I'm, way back nineteen eighty nine. Only go, motivate money, I'm, Yoruba man, from Nigeria, I just sound from Nigeria. But you call them, no, I blame my department here. Because there are other Yorubas in other parts of Africa. We are the ones who are fortunate to be in Nigeria. Then the others ones are also unfortunate to be there in Benetia, too.
So we, because even with, because we also had discussed. When I wish I knew this, I will allow the South East African people to have their origin. And even move the capital to Portugal.
And that's what I'm advised.
Any consult or chat line. But I learnt if you see no consciousness, one is the pay, I am Yoruba. I am Yoruba. Uh nationality were recognizing it and all that. If your hand is still up and you're here with us, thank you. The sourcing of period. Because. And the other. Uh actually meeting. Legislators. To money House of Rep, there are four hundred and thirty of them. Committee of Foreign Affairs. Uniform letter. Uh Mister Ayodile. Africa go only bullshit me. Only our congressman to one in charge of West Africa, into one in North Africa, East Africa. Majority of that will end up in the garbage. To what about target out to one in West Africa, that target out to one in Nigeria. Right now, one more. So. Have a permanent secretary. Not to be. So we thank you for your efforts. Uh and then please be assured that we're working on this. Uh Mister Allah, please Mister Allah, are you still with us? I know, we know you.
Yes, um my question is um to Mister Ogun. To meet you. Um on Camila because a lot of times. You see, eventually we find out that they are being bailed out. And if their numbers are not reduced, they don't get afraid. If we catch these full army bandits, these murderers. We should extinguish them, we should expire these people, we shouldn't hand them over to the police. Because if our numbers are dwindling and their numbers are increasing, they have more power. But when they find out that their colleagues and their counterparts are nowhere to be found. They have the police.
Sister Lamy Day. So.
And I'm not saying that. Beginning of this week or end of last week. And they were searching their bags. Of course, you won't find anything because they know you are modest of Randy. He definitely will check their bags and look for arms. Their arms are already in the forest, helicopters have dropped them. And of course, they allowed them in, they should have turned them back off.
Yeah.
Daddy, I just now, I just one minute. Every, every day. And all the years. Barely even sees them. And he be. But she sees the law of them crossing over. So I don't know.
Ille Yoruba undertaking. By Lou. Unregistered People's Organization, UNPO, Tony presence, niwa the United Nations. Gonna shake. At the sign undertaking, the UNPO. We're going to use the best peaceful means to exit. The country called Nigeria. But. So. Self-defense is not a crime. But. It will count against us, we're not doing that. Okay.
People are dying.
Don't worry, we're, we're going to ensure that our people are protected. We're all feeling it, but at the same time, we have to follow the rules. Florida, I mean, whatever, what is the state of Florida? So. And me, property. Like, well, like, you know. We are different people, we are different nations. Pushing nationalization. Somebody.
Thank you. Several countries in West Africa, to Central Africa, not in Africa, daddy. In not and Ghana, the same thing. So most of them. So we are not going to allow it to happen in Ireland. Because even now in Gaza, in one of their deposition. The plan is a menace and a nuisance to any community dependents attached to. What is cockney led nineteen nineteen? One new way. Those are the three discussion of all of us. So. They, they attempted this. So we cannot allow it. That is double goal.
I say, I say. I'm a senders, you will both Facebook and all that is being recorded. Survivor or defeat test. So. These are the things that Yoruba need not anymore. We have spent three hours. This is one to not serving hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Oh, I know the book, social media. That left a full on one if you know what. They back. America at the central post. It has to be both ways. So. We are transparent and we are responsible to you. Five hundred people can come here. We are representing you, watch you, we keep you away from there. A costly. And the money ritual reform, the test message, WhatsApp message, voicemail, the WhatsApp. We want you. As you, we, we, we thank you so much. Mechanized farming, all those things, fishery, agriculture, osbandry. Affair construction. So the future of Yoruba is rosy. Again, we thank you so much for coming. Yes, sir. Uh if I didn't know, see.
I go now, although it is on, on a technical level. Uh in county. Go see see electricity. We can do it within nine months, every village in Yoruba land will have electricity. There are all of them are just flowing to the sea freely without any use. We are not going to allow it again. We are going to make use of God's giving waters, God giving. Topography, the hills and the valleys and the water business. And that would give us the energy to start. And many more things we'll be talking about in the future.
Amen.
Um as you go. At the door.
Thank you very much, everybody. National anthem. Thank you. Uh the lobby. The lobby will, will remain open for some time. Tabari, our water fair sorrow, we are real or something. Uh the lobby will be open for a few minutes for general discussion. I will stop the recording at this time. The lobby is open for socializing, for personal interaction and everything. Uh the recording will be stopped at this very moment. Thank you so much.